All right, I'll call the eight o'clock agenda briefing of April 2nd to order. At eight thirty, we will recess the board of commissioners meeting and convene the board of equalization review. Nine o'clock, we call a meeting to order invocation Commissioner Foster has and the pledge of allegiance Commissioner Williams has. Next will be the approval of the minutes. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have one resolution we'd like to add under new business, item number sixteen, resolution in support of the United States Congress Armed Services Committee allocating forty-two million dollars for the Critical Combat Arms Training and Maintenance Facility at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base.
Okay.
Thank you. And if one of you all would like to read it, or if you don't, I will read it. I thought, I want it under new business, not consent.
I'll read it. I'll read it. That's going on our new business?
Yes, sir.
Number sixteen.
Sixteen.
Any others? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Sir.
Then we've got a special presentations with approval of the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four donate live proclamation by Dr. Sandra Coley. Next would be the approval of the April twenty-twenty-four Children and Families Month Proclamation presented by Valerie Wallace. Next would be the approved the month of the military child by Heather Winstead. And number eight would be the twenty-twenty-four National Telecommunication Week Proclamation by Chris Born. Then we'll go to unfinished business.
The unemployment committee.
Oh, unemployment committee, we got one. Unfinished business will be a motion to approve the sale of surplus property jointly owned by the city of Goldsboro at two hundred North Carolina Street. Then we'll go to the consent agenda.
We need to go into that real quick a bit.
Any questions on that? I don't have, I mean.
Y'all had approved something different before that the city didn't adopt.
Right.
Did what now?
We had approved the sale of this to somebody else that the city did not adopt.
Okay. Did it ever come before the city council?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, any other questions on number nine?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Did I understand you say we had approved the sale to someone else?
Yes, sir. And sent it to the city for their approval.
And then they've come back with another person to approve.
That's been a year or so ago.
Yeah.
Maybe even longer, I don't know. Probably longer.
They took it off their agenda. They held it, they didn't do anything for a period of time, then they put it on the agenda, took it off, never voted on it, and have now sold it to someone else.
Trying to.
Have you sold it?
Yeah.
Not, or want to sell it to someone.
Okay. Well, we're gonna reject.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay.
All right, then we've got your consent agenda, late present use value applications. We got those on. Any, any, any or not?
These personally.
Okay. All right, any questions on those? Late property tax exemptions?
Same thing.
Okay.
Tax offices needed for your approval.
Any questions? Okay. We're going to budget amendments. Angie?
Good morning.
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 Budget amendment number four oh four is from soil and water conservation. This is to appropriate forty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Agriculture to, for the.
Hold a minute. Can you put them up there on the screen?
dollars to appropriate funds to assist them in the implementation of their conservation Number four oh six is from the finance office. This is to request appropriation of A R P funds to cover the match for the great grant for the Infinity Link and North State broadband projects for a total of two sixty-two, four Number four oh seven is for the sheriff's department. This is a request to appropriate A R P funds for several projects to include evidence lockers, a mobile app, x-ray machine, and also a portable restroom and shower trailer for a total of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-five Budget amendment four eleven, this is for EMS. This is a request to appropriate A R P funds for several projects to include epoxying the floors of all the EMS stations, glide scope, raincoats, and two ambulances for a total of seven hundred ninety-two dollars, six hundred and seventeen.
These ambulances cost over a quarter of a million dollars each?
Yes, sir.
Oh my gosh.
If our, if our truck's eight hundred to a million dollars now, sometimes, some of it's all because they can. But thanks, thanks to all the influx of federal money, everything's gone sky high, including building construction.
Budget amendment number four fifteen is from the library. This is a request to appropriate five hundred and fifty dollars from donations they have received for program supplies. Budget amendment number four sixteen is for the health department. This is to anticipate and appropriate one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and six dollars from the bridge access program for COVID- nineteen vaccinations. This is to help maintain access to those vaccines. Number four seventeen is the health department. This is to reallocate funds that they've already received between their food program and additional training line items so that they can be used for the remaining of the Budget amendment number four twenty is to allocate revenue, user fee revenue of one hundred and fifteen thousand to pay for EMS collection fees. Our collections are up, therefore, we have a five percent collection fee we have to pay to our collection agency.
So just, that makes, we're glad to pay that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This should cover us through the end of the year.
That means we're making more, collecting more money. All right.
Budget amendment number four twenty-three is from four H. They have received a grant from, it's a sub grant through the N C State. It's for N C Ag Ventures. The grant amount is two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. They are required to match that at fifteen percent, and they are also asking to use some of their user fees to purchase the signs signage using this grant. So that total amount is three thousand nine seventy-five.
Did they check with the? No, I'll ask that question later. Did they check with the city?
On what now?
On the sign.
The sign.
On the sign at the farmer's market where they're changing?
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay.
They will before it's over with.
That's a mighty expensive sign.
Did what now?
That's a mighty expensive sign. To compare it to ambulance is rather cheap.
All right.
Budget amendment number four twenty-four is for the detention center. The detention center is requesting to allocate, move funds from their shared expense line item to their miscellaneous line item. This is to temporarily cover a shortage in their inmate trust fund. So they changed software back in August, and it resulted in a shortage. But over the weekend, we have found out the resolution to this problem, so we should be getting a refund in the coming weeks. Number four twenty-five, this is insurance reimbursements for solid wasted to damage to their Pike Town Convenience Center fence, seventeen hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Four twenty-six is sheriff's office. This is to move salaries and fringes to the project string for accounting and tracking purposes only. The budget amendment had already been approved to accept the grant funds meeting or so ago for a hundred thousand dollars. Four twenty-nine is the health department. This is to realign the revenues for this local workforce development. It was coded to the incorrect revenue, so just putting in its correct place. Four thirty is also health department. This is to anticipate and appropriate grant funds that they have received from the A R P temporary savings fund for public health services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Number four thirty-one is a request to use A R P funds from the sheriff's office to purchase sheriff ballistic helmets, amount of fifty thousand, seven forty-one, sixty. And that is all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Angie, one question. I'm gonna help, what is all these professional services? I mean, they amount up to quite a large amount, eighteen thousand, twenty-one thousand, seven thousand, two thousand. I mean, what kind of professional services are we using?
Expensive ones.
Like language interpretation services, they have different areas of, that's just coded professional.
Professional services is a line item.
But I don't know what the line item entails.
Right. There is, and that last one, it was speech or translation services.
Man, we got several languages in.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, number thirteen, consent agenda would be approved the updated conflict of interest policy with Wayne County Purchase Manual.
So this was actually a recommendation back in the earlier part of the fiscal year from our auditor in the audit. Our current policy is only about three or four sentences long, so we are wanting to, you asked us to expand on this, to make it more clear. This will provide more definitions of what an actual conflict of interest is, who a family member is, and what a business interest is. This policy actually outlines specific interest or instances that create a conflict of interest for public officials and employees. It has some statutory references that deal with the most recent statutes that have been approved. For instance, if you were on a board, a nonprofit board, you would not be permitted to make decisions in those cases. So this policy is actually being put in place to help, help us to avoid actual perceived and potential conflicts of interest.
So that, that affects us as well as everybody?
Yes, sir.
So if we serve on a nonprofit board, we cannot vote on, on?
You shouldn't, you should.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm, you should disclose that.
Got it.
Have you got that finalized?
Yes, sir. So once you approve this policy today, we will be implementing it. And our first two steps in the implementation process is to have anyone that has a P card, a county purchasing card, will need to complete this conflict of interest and disclose any businesses or, whether it be their family member, any details in the policy exactly who the family members are considered son or daughter parents. So we'll implement it with P cards to start with, and if you are in our workflow, our Munis accounting software workflow, to approve invoices, purchases, requisitions, contracts, you will also be required to complete this form. This will be required annually. And I will, this policy appoints me as the conflict of interest point of contact, so I will, you know, review those forms and make the decision if there's conflicts or not, and remove those people from those decision making.
Got it.
And we get a printed copy of that when you get it finalized?
It's, it's right here on the thing, I think, yeah.
It should be included in your agenda today.
It's right here. Wait, I'm sorry. Go back there.
I can print those out at the end of the week.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think this is long, long overdue, and I am so glad to see that we have got this in place. So, great work, thanks.
And Andrew has been a huge, you know, part of this.
Any other comments, questions? All right, go on number fourteen, motion to approve the update, to approve to update the health department patient fees eligibility and bad debt write-off policy.
Angie is gonna speak on it.
Good morning. This policy was brought to the Consolidated Health Human Services Board. It was vetted and is coming to you for requests for approval. It just updates user fees and updates the language in the current policy that they're holding for bad debt and fees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, go on number fifteen, motion to approve proposed change to scale house operations at Dudley Landfield for Saturday.
Yes, sir. As requested, we, it's brought our attention that the process of weighing in at the landfill on Saturdays was giving time, taking some time, and in effort to speed that up for our non-commercial visitors on Saturday, we are looking at a flat fee of five dollars a vehicle for Saturday onlys in order to speed that line up instead of hiring additional scale staff and training them. It'll be a, I think, as far as the money revenue will come out about even, we shouldn't see any loss in revenue. Now, commercial vehicles will still need to weigh in, weigh out. It'll just be the public that want, that wish to go into the landfill, although you can dump anything at our convenience center, and there's no way in or way out or fees or anything, so.
Any questions on that?
So if I'm understanding that now, if you're a private citizen and you drive your pickup or trailer or whatever in there, there'll be a way.
Without a trailer.
Without a trailer?
Yeah.
Just a pickup. You don't, you just pull in, basically pay the five dollars and go pay the five.
You don't have to weigh back out.
Right. Just keep on getting it.
But if you bring a trailer now, you're gonna have to go and get away. Okay. Good enough.
Any other questions? All right, then we go into public comments, county manager's report, board of commissioners.
We got one more.
Okay.
We have the walk-on.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, that resolution that I mentioned earlier, which I think you will read.
I do, I need to put a big star beside that. All right, got it. Uh, we got, we got seven minutes. You wanna go in closed session now?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion to go in closed session to.
I'm just to consider the acquisition of property.
All right. All right, we'll be in closed session. All right, we'll be in closed session.
Alright we'll take a short recess for uh about five minutes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Foster, you have the invocation?
Yes, I've asked Pastor Michael Salz from Crossroads Community Church to come and pray for us this morning.
All right. Hey, Bill.
Thank you, all commissioners.
Good.
For this opportunity, let's pray. Dear Lord, we love you, we praise you, we thank you for all your many wonderful blessings, Lord. I thank you for this opportunity that I have to come forth and stand before these commissioners and humbly pray and say thank you, God, for all that you've done for us in the past. Lord, but I pray a special prayer over these commissioners that you would lead, guide, and direct their steps, Lord. Help us to unite us as a county, Lord, like we've never been united before. Restore us, Lord, to the direction that you would have us to go, that we might bring honor and glory to the building of your kingdom. I just say how honored I am and how thankful I am for these commissioners to come forth and to serve for us, Lord. Yes, they may be a group that may have differences of opinion, Lord, but I pray that you unite them like they've never been united before, so we can stand as one, one county, serving you with all our hearts. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Michael. I'm gonna show my age a little bit. I remember when he was a little boy.
(laughter). Commissioner Wood.
Okay, Mr. Chair, before I do the pledge of allegiance, I just want to acknowledge the mayor of Mount Olive being here today and the Commissioner Simmons being here as well.
Wood. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Just a little announcement, if we have to evacuate the building, half the room to the right will go with me, half the room to my left will go with Carol. If you have a medical emergency, Dave Cuddaback, our MS director, is here, just see him. All right, all that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the March 19th minutes.
The move.
All in favor, please cast your vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, motion carries. All right, Mr. Crump, we have adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, I would like to add, I'm 16 under new business, a resolution in support of the United States Congress Armed Services Committee allocating $42 million for the Critical Combat Arms Training and Maintenance Facility at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the adjusted agenda.
Your vote.
Please, please raise, well, it didn't come up that time, or sometime, someone did.
And yet.
All right, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. All right, special presentations, motion, the approval of the 2024 Donate Life Proclamation by Dr. Sandra Coley. Come forth. Good morning.
I am Dr. Sandra Coley, and I am here to ask the Wayne County Commissioners if they would adopt the 2024 National Donate Life Proclaiming April as Donate Life Month. Whereas, according to the United Network of Organ Sharing UNOS, more than 103,687 people are waiting for organ transplants nationally, and 3,645 of those people are here in North Carolina. And whereas, an average of 17 people wait a transplant die each day because there is a severe shortage of organ donors. And whereas, every 10 minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list, and the list is growing faster than the rate of organ donations. And whereas, providing facts and dispelling myths are key to making an informed decision about becoming a donor and interesting in increasing the number of people who sign up as donors. And whereas, the number of registered donors in North Carolina reached more than 500,000 on a bridge's partnership with the DMV. And whereas, one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people and improve more than 75 lives through tissue, blood, bone, bone marrow, and coronary donation. And whereas, North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation and discuss their decision with their families and physicians. Sign up as donors via the North Carolina DMV by putting a heart on their driver's license or enrolling online at donatelifeinc.org. And whereas, East Carolina Health Transplant Center is a leader in providing life-saving transplants with patients cared for by a team of experts, including surgeons, nurse coordinators, nutritionists, and pathologists. And whereas, Anna Bridge is a federally designated organ procurement organization, serving 7.2 million people in 77 counties of North Carolina and Danville, Virginia, and serving over 100 hospitals and four transplant centers that perform heart, lung, liver, kidney, pancreas, intestine transplants, maximizing the passing of the heroic gift of life from one human being to another through organ and tissue donation. Whereas, the County of Wayne joins healthcare professionals, volunteers, educators, government agencies, face base, and community groups, and private organizations in an effort to boost the number of organ, tissue, blood, bone, bone marrow, corner, and stem cell donors throughout North Carolina. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April as National Donate Life Month.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Coley, thank you so much for being here. My family has been affected by this, and I would just appreciate so much what you and probably hundreds of other people do. It's, until it's touched your life, you really don't realize how important it is. But again, just thank you and all the others that are really pushing this because it means so much to a lot of people. You know, someone has to sacrifice their life for it to happen, but most of the time they save a life, and it's just, it's heartwarming for you to know what y'all are doing to push this through. Thank you so, ma'am.
Thank you, and if I can make a comment, I would like to add that this year I am going to be doing my blanket donation drive. I did it pre-COVID, but this will be my first time post-COVID. I have a program that's going to take place April 16th at the Wayne County Library. We will be accepting donations of brand-new twin-sized blankets and large throws between 6:00 and 6:30. The program is going to begin at 6:30. These gifts of love are going to be distributed to the dialysis centers in Wayne County. We have patients, and some of them receive treatments two and three times a week. It is very cold in those centers, it have to be for the germs, and it's, they have to bring a blanket. And what has happened, there's a shortage of blankets at the centers because we have patients from facilities, nursing homes, and other places, they come and they don't have a blanket, or if they come with a blanket from the facility, sometimes they don't bring it back, if I could put it that way, they don't bring it back. And I've decided that my little piece, I can provide blankets. I do it for family members and friends that call me, I get it to them. As the commissioners, some of you already know, I'm a professor at Shaw Divinity School. I have students that come to me, have sent them all over North Carolina. So again, this will be my first time doing a blanket drive post-COVID. Thank you so much, and you're all invited. Come on out to see us on the 16th, I have a gift for you. All you have to do is come to me, let me know you're one of our commissioners if I don't recognize you, and I have a gift for you. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments?
Dr. Coley used to visit at the library.
It's at the Wayne County Library, 6:30.
6 to 6:30.
And we'll accept in donations beginning at 6 o'clock.
Any other comments? I would, I would recommend everyone sign up for Donate Life. My mama was a direct recipient, she'd have been blind before she passed away if it hadn't have been for that, which was, she had two cornea implants at Duke, so that's another family member that's directly affected by it, so, thank you, ma'am. I'll cast your vote. It didn't come up on the screen, just, mind me. Okay, okay, I'm talking about the, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, number six, the approval of the 2024 Children and Family Month Proclamation as presented by Valerie Wallace. Good morning.
I'm Valerie Wallace, the Director of the Partnership for Children of Wayne County and a member of the Care for Wayne Coalition for Advocacy, Resilience, and Education. This is a community coalition founded in '21, rooted in years of previous work around the prevention of child abuse. Members of this coalition represent across-sector Wayne County agencies and citizens. Over the last year, there were 784 reported cases of neglect, 35 reported cases of abuse, 108 reported cases of abuse and neglect, and 19 of those cases were substantiated, and sadly, there was one death in Wayne County. That is one death too many. We believe that every child should have a community that makes them feel safe and loved and wanted. We will continue our mission as a coalition to lessen the impacts of multi-generational trauma by building support through awareness and education and advocacy. Our vision is to be a resilient and compassionate community where everyone feels safe and a sense of belonging. As you drive away around Wayne County during the month of April, you will see blue pinwheels. These pinwheels represent the notion of playfulness, joy, and childhood. Let them be a reminder that it's not enough to respond to child abuse and neglect, but that we must build and support strong families through community engagement programs and policies. We are appreciative of each of you for proclaiming April as Child and Families Month. Whereas, our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Wayne County, and whereas, the quality of parenting caregiving is one of the most powerful protective factors for children. Our community recognizes the long-term value of offering as many services to support positive environments for children and families. Whereas, Wayne County is home to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and we recognize that our military force or presence comes not just from those who wear the uniform, but from their families who also serve on behalf of our country. And whereas, April is a month of the military child, and military children make daily sacrifices so their parents can keep our nation safe, we must match their sacrifice with a commitment to provide the full support of our communities. And whereas, April 6th through the 12th is National Week of the Young Child, where access to affordable, high-quality education and health care for every child in our community, particularly in the first five years, is vital to building a strong community, state, and nation. And whereas, our community recognizes the tireless efforts of those in Wayne County who who work in various agencies, nonprofits, childcare facilities, and schools that offer care and services to families as we move towards creating a safe, healthy, and equitable community for our children and families. And whereas, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and actions from everyone. And whereas, child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences throughout a lifetime. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, and effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of community collaborations. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, these efforts create protective factors which are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and development developmental well-being of children. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse, generational trauma, early childhood, and education. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners in recognition of efforts to support Child Abuse Prevention Month, Week of the Young Child, and Month of the Military Military Child, does hereby hereby proclaim April twenty-twenty-four as Children and Families Month in Wayne County, and urges all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and their families.
Thank you, ma'am. I entertain the motion to approve April twenty-twenty-four as Children and Families Month.
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote. Any comments? Yes, sir.
No, no, no.
Okay. Any comments?
Thank you for all you do.
Just raise your right hand, yeah. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I do want to invite you all to an opening ceremony next week at Herman Park, April tenth at eleven o'clock. We will be discussing child abuse preventions and strategies for families. Dr. Taylor will be on the agenda, somebody from the military base. Bryant Gibson from the Child Abuse Clinic down in Mount Olive will also be presenting. It should last about thirty minutes. We'd love for you all to come out and support the work that we're doing.
And that's what time?
Um, eleven o'clock on April tenth, next Wednesday.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, next on our agenda is a motion to approve the Month of Military Child proclamation, and Ms. Heather Winstead.
Thank you for having us today. I'm Heather Winstead, District Military Liaison for Wayne County Public Schools, and with me today is?
Christine Barnes-Williams. I'm the school liaison at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base.
We would like to thank you for having us this morning. April is a very important month to us, but it's very important in Wayne County right now in particular, so we would like to honor this month, this month, the military child. Whereas, thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving our country's armed armed forces in active-duty posts around the world, and?
Whereas, near nearly two million children have at least one parent currently serving active duty, and?
Whereas, Wayne County Public Schools has over two thousand military-connected students, over thirteen percent of its student population, who are children of active duty, reserve, retired, veteran, and?
Whereas, the U.S. Department of Defense celebrates the month of April as Month of the Military Child, further highlighting the important role military children play in the armed forces community, and?
Whereas, the children of our service members are major contributors to the strength of their parents and make significant contributions to family, schools, our community, the state, the nation, despite repeated and prolonged absences of one or both parents, and?
Whereas, parents serve in the military, their kids serve too, and it is fitting for our community, for our country, to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support for our troops.
Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Wayne County does hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-four as Month of the Military Child, and April nineteenth as Purple Up Day for Wayne County Public Schools. We encourage, as all personnel of Wayne County and Wayne County residents, to recognize the contributions of our military families and to celebrate the spirit of military children across our district and nation by wearing purple on April nineteenth as an outward symbol of appreciation for our youngest heroes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I entertain the motion to approve uh, the Month of Military Child proclamation.
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote. Raise your right hand. All right, thank you. I appreciate you coming and um, being indirectly involved in probably every deployment that's gone in the past thirty years um, at Seymour Johnson with Shelby and the counselor at Meadow Lane. You don't you don't realize how a deployment affects uh, the family, especially the children. You not know how long the parent's going to be gone um, or if they're coming back. So, this is uh, this is probably one of the probably one of the most important proclamations that I think we do. That affects every uh, it affects not only the military families, but it affects our community. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, on to number eight, the approval of the twenty-twenty-four National Telecommunicator Week proclamation. Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Board. It's an honor and a privilege to be before you again today. We have done this every year since I took over as nine-one-one director, and I think it's an important thing that we do to recognize National Telecommunicators Week in Wayne County. As you well know, the nature of our job puts us behind the scenes often, so this is an opportunity for us to really kind of bring us to the forefront and and give some of these guys the attention and the credit that they deserve. And while I read it, I would ask, we do have a few telecommunications in the audience today, if they would stand while I read it, please? Put you on the spot? All righty. Whereas, emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Wayne County nine-one-one center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first first responders and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the public safety telecommunications of Wayne County have contributed substantially to the apprehension apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each telecommunications has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April fourteenth through twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wayne County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion for approving the twenty twenty-four National Telecommunication Week. Have a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Y'all want to come up this time?
Mine do.
Good. All right, thank you. Any comments?
Chris, I just want to thank you and the and the group, and all for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Like you say, you're behind the scenes, we don't see you, but thank God you're there.
We're there if you need us.
Mr. E. Cobb.
And uh, and Chris and and our call takers, I think will agree with me. They've got a very stressful job. I mean, they've they're in a position that they've got to make very important decisions. I know we had a call the other day, and a lady called in and said, uh, my whole backyard's on fire, everything's burning, and hung up. All right, they've got they've got an important decision to make then. What do I do? I I mean, it's it's a very stressful job, and 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 we don't thank them enough. But but really, they're the first ones on the scene. Uh, you know, some of a lot of their calls is routine, some of their calls are ridiculous, but but when the serious ones come in, uh, they've got to make the decision. And thank you for for working with them and and training them because uh, from what I hear on the radio, we've got some pretty good call takers and dispatchers.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you. Proud of them.
Yes, sir. I've been in mental health for years, and recently had a therapist that was working for me, and her and her husband moved to Atlanta, and she took a job as a nine-one-one dispatcher. And I always called to check on her, and she said that she never knew the level of anxiety and stress and everything else that it takes on you, the toll it takes on you mentally to do that job. So I just want to say thank you, make sure you take care of this, because you're steadily trying to take care of others and what's going on with them and trying to put them first, but it also takes a toll on your mental. So, please take care of yourself, and thank you for everything that you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any any other comment?
I just want to thank you. You know, the job is not an easy job, and most people couldn't do it, wouldn't want to do it, so I really applaud you, and I appreciate what you do, because you're really needed. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I don't know if y'all, uh, sometimes we listen, we don't listen, people are standing up here talking, and Chris made a comment in proclamation that they are the first first responder on the scene. But to go with what Vivian just spoke about, a lot of times you don't know the outcome or what's happening. And and we really do appreciate, because if y'all don't do your job, you know, as first responders, we can't do ours, so thank you.
They do everything from taking calls to delivering babies on telephone.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, moving on to the appointment committee.
Yes, sir. We have one appointment just becoming to you in the form of a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'm the board, if you would read that, please, I appreciate it.
Yes, this is a motion to appoint Mr. Ronald R. Sasser the fourth of Perkins Road, replacing Mr. Luther E. Taylor the third as the Fire Commissioner for the Belfast Fire District, and that is coming from the Belfast Fire Department Board.
Well, I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Or raise your right hand.
I voted.
Mine need to come up again.
Mine.
Okay, on to unfinished business. We have before us a motion to approve the sale of surplus properties jointly owned by the city of Goldsboro located at two hundred North Carolina Street, as Goldsboro has requested.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny this request. Uh, I just don't think, well, we all know that that one of the parties has not completed all of the right procedures in in doing this, and I just I make a motion that we've denied this request for right now.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor that we deny the sale of two hundred North Carolina Street. Please cast your vote.
So, hold up. This says approve, so we're saying?
No, no, no.
Or?
No.
Okay.
You want to approve the motion, which is to deny the?
Okay, so, yes.
So if you approve the motion?
I tell you what, let's 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 back up the point. I got a motion on the floor to deny sale of two hundred North Carolina Street. All in favor of denying the sale, raise your right hand. All opposed, motion carries unanimous. Well, that makes it easier. All right, uh, I'm looking to I'm looking at a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote. Or raise your right hand. Okay, uh, new business, um, a motion to approve the proposed change to the scale house operations at Dudley Landfield for Saturdays. Chip, you want to explain?
Yes, sir. It's brought to our attention that in the process of weighing in and weighing out at the landfill on Saturdays, that can sometimes cause a wait uh, times for our customers. Monday through Friday operations utilize a inbound scale and an outbound scale, and due to the staffing levels and training required, there are currently only enough scale operators to use uh, one on Sat, only one staff person on Saturdays, requiring everybody to pull back through the scale house to weigh out. Proposal is to not add any additional staff for the second scale operator, but charge a flat fee of five dollars for any single vehicle without a trailer containing small loads. This would eliminate the need to require a way out of those vehicles. It will reduce the wait times to check out and not require any additional staff. The landfill director feels that this would eliminate seventy percent of all non-commercial traffic to the landfill through the scale on Saturdays. Staff recommendations, the manager recommends a solution number two for five dollars uh, and would include a future budget amendment to adjust revenues at a future date after implementation.
And this does not apply to commercial traffic, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the motion, or I need to entertain the motion to approve the proposed changes.
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I voted.
All right. Okay, uh, number sixteen, which is the addition to the agenda, uh, it's a resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-four dash ten, a resolution in support of the United States Congress Armed Services Committee allocating forty-two million for the Critical Combat Arms Training and Maintenance Facility at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Whereas, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base in Wayne County, North Carolina serves as the only east-coast military base and one of the only two class bases for active component F-15E combat aircraft squadrons of the United States. And whereas, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base's F-15E Combat Squadron routinely deploy in support of our nation's combatant commanders' requirements for tactical aircraft missions needs. And whereas, it is in our nation's interest to, and I'm going to emphasize, invest resources to ensure Seymour Johnson Air Force Base's F-15E combat capabilities remain at a superior level and enhance when possible. And whereas, given the international threats and uncertainties created by countries pursuing military active actions that are counter to the United States' interests across multiple regions of the world, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base's F-15E combat aircraft and the military personnel who fly and maintain these aircraft warrant wise investments to ensure their combat effectiveness and lethality are unmatched in any conflict. And whereas, the economic impact of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and its associated missions' performance has have a substantial impact in Wayne County, North Carolina, with a total economic impact of nine hundred million annually. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the of County of Wayne that Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the nation's tactical combat aircraft capability would be enhanced by the investment in a combat arms training and maintenance facility. And we recommend the House Armed Services Committee include an additional forty-two million for the critical capabilities in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five National Defense Authorization Act adopted this day, this the second day of April, twenty-twenty-four in Wayne County, North Carolina. That comes to you in form of a motion.
So moved.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. That's a, um, Seymour Johnson is a critical uh, component of our national defense, um, leaving our economy out of it. Our national offense is one of our our biggest priorities, and uh, and we are we are in full support of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. All right, uh, going on to public comments, do we have anybody signing up?
We do, we have ASAP Porter with Georgia Pacific.
Okay, Mr. Ford.
Good morning, everybody. My name is ASAP Porter. I do public affairs for Georgia Pacific. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time this morning. Phil Commissioners, thank y'all, and just glad to be able to see you again. Again, ASAP Porter with Georgia Pacific, doing public affairs mainly in the southeast, so North Carolina, all the way through Arkansas, with Dudley as one of my plants. I mean, who have lumber and plywood out there. We're very excited to be in the community. We we've been here for a while, so we're we've got some good history here, I think. We've got a lot of folks that work here, and something that we focus on in our company is we have something called Good Profit at Georgia Pacific, and then from a coat company on a whole where on a whole where the point of the business is to make profit, but how you make that profit is very important. Do you give back to your community? Do you give back to your employees? Do you give back to the folks that, the families of the employees as well? We want to make sure that we're doing that a lot. So anything in the community that we can help with, if there's, you know, I think a couple of parades that we make a look at, or some charitable donations, or working with the school system, I know that we're looking at how do you train that next workforce that can help in hopefully our mills, but you know, other mills as well in the area. So what we can do to help there. So really, what we can do to kind of be a good corporate citizen here in Wayne County, Dudley and Mount Olive and Goldsboro and the surrounding area as well. So let's grab, I can leave some cards with you. Just got my contact information. If y'all need anything from Georgia Pacific, please let me know. Happy to come back to town. Hopefully, we'll be back throughout the year and throughout next year as well. So anything y'all need, just let me know, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate your long-term commitment and support of Georgia Pacific, and look forward to the continued support and hopefully growth down the road.
We'll let you know.
Mr. Chairman. And also, you mentioned the public school system. Have you reached out to the community college because they do, they do a fantastic job in working with companies to train just for what you need, not for what somebody else needs.
Right, and we met with Ms. Julie Graham yesterday.
Okay.
Meet with her, and she's gonna, and I think Mr. Early as well, and Mr. Chip as well, we met, and they're gonna get us in contact, some great contacts at all the schools and the community colleges as well, to see what we can do, what makes sense, and how we can kind of lean in a little bit there, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Well, I had to call him, but that was just for the...
Right, that's it? All right, public comments are closed. Our county manager report?
The only thing I have is a reminder that on Wednesday, April the 10th, we have a ribbon cutting for our Northern Wayne Library, and that will also be a ribbon cutting for our Bookmobile. Also, Commissioner Acoit put a commemorative coin up here on my desk celebrating the Hunter Fire Department's sixty-five years, a very nice coin, and I appreciate it, from 1959 to 2024. Very nice, and we're celebrating that with them, and thank you for the coin. That's all the comments I have.
All right, thanks, sir. Board of Commissioner Committee reports, Commissioner Foster.
Yes, we have a lot of kids here in Wayne County doing a lot of great things, and sometimes it gets overlooked, but I wanted to speak on two young men that recently, one competed in track at Nationals. He won the sixty-meter dash. He's right here from Wayne County. He competed with all the kids in the United States, and he won first, Mr. Rakim Fason. He goes to Eastern Wayne High School, a great student, great kid overall, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone knows about him and knows what he's doing. And the other is Shai Money Ashford. He ranked second in the nation in boxing, you know, which is big, you know what I mean? Like I said, competed against all the kids in the United States, and he got second, you know what I mean? And he's right here from Wayne County, so we have some kids doing some outstanding things right here, and you know, you see them, speak to them, donations, they always need them because they're traveling, you know what I mean? I know it's new season coming up for both of them. They're gonna be traveling, whether it's Junior Olympics, outdoor Nationals, whatever it may be, so if you can, make sure you see those young men and give them a donation, help them out. Thank you.
Mr. Foster, could sometimes some of these young people come in, like you're talking about, so we can meet them?
Yes, yes, we can reach out. Yes, yes, definitely.
That would be nice to meet them personally.
And the gym can use some donations.
And Commissioner Foster, he'll be going pro. Shai Money will be going pro, so we have greatness here in Wayne County.
Well, I thought you meant Bevan was going pro. That is Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Hardison?
I don't really have anything to say, but I would like to thank Pro Temp Mayor Randy Matthews for showing up today. Appreciate you, hope to see you more. And also, we've already recognized the mayor and the commissioner from Mount Olive, Dr. Newton, Mr. Simmons, thank you for coming in.
Did I have anything to say?
You got any?
Mr. Acoit? Yes, I do. March has been a busy month for me. Some of the things I've done, I went to the WISE meetup, this is for ladies. Kate Daniels gave a presentation to us ladies and told us how important we were and everything, and we all agreed. And I went to the Friends of Seymour event for the change of command. That was very nice. That was the first one I've ever been to. Went to Dr. Kroom's Leadership in Faith. That was very, very impressive. I enjoyed that, especially the story that Dr. Kroom told about one of his students. And this student is from Johnston County, and what he had to do and how he dropped out and how he come back and became very successful. If you know of the Waynes in Johnston County, that's who that is. So that was very impressive on that story. Another thing, I spoke at the Vietnam Veterans Thing Saturday. That was very, very interesting, and seeing these guys, still a lot of pain there, but hopefully, you know, with these kind of events, it'll help remove some of this pain eventually, but there is still a lot of pain with these guys. And, but they had a full house, very interesting, and I feel very honored to have the opportunity to speak. And I attended my first tree-in meeting. I can see it's gonna be a very busy meeting with all these meetings. It's gonna be a lot of work, but hopefully we get the goals and things that we want to accomplish. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Wayne Acoit?
Not really evident the resolutions that we had passed today. I think all of them are very worthy, but it's, the one that touches me the most is that one right there, Donate Life. My granddaughter was on the waiting list, and unfortunately, she didn't live long enough to get her transplant, but that, that group that does that, I mean, they're on top of it. She had sixty-five roses, so therefore, the only part of her organs that was, that they could use from her because of her disease was their eyes. And so there's, there's two people today somewhere that can see because of her, and it was a great sacrifice. We miss her, but you know, at least she, she contributed to someone else's well-being. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daughery.
I want to acknowledge the sheriff that is back there in the corner, said tell the other elected officials not being recognized. Didn't want you to feel left out. Thank you so much. I think a lot of people are seeing a lot of activity going on in Wayne County, especially over here off of Highway Seventy. There's a lot of construction going on there, and we are finally getting a road, finally, there are a lot of activity there in regards to the additional road going into Park East. We hope to have some exciting news coming out here in regards to some expansions and growth in industry here at Wayne County. I think we're gonna go on a tour today of some of our facilities that we have under construction. We've got a lot of projects going on. But with that in mind, we're looking forward to some great things happening here in Wayne County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Williams?
Yes. I want to also send greetings to Councilwoman Randy Matthews, and I'm not going to forget you, Sheriff Pierce, as well. I want to thank Councilwoman Matthews. She's done a lot of great things that don't even consist of being a councilwoman. She's done a lot of humanitarian things that affect young people in the community. She's currently sending some kids to King's Dominion, is that correct? And, and I want to thank her for putting that together. I also want to thank Commissioner Foster for donating to that as well. You know, that's how it works, you know? We all just pitch in and we help our young people here because they are our future. Want to thank them tremendously for that. Also, I visited Mount Olive Town Council yesterday, and I just wanted to give them some information. You know, we know Mount Olive is part of the county. Sometimes they feel as though they aren't part of the county, and it's my job to, anything that I know that can help the community, to bring to their attention. So we, as a county, we're trying to fix our water issues throughout the county, and Mount Olive has some water, sewer issues as well. So I submitted what I knew and to the county, so I'm hoping that they will take advantage of what I have submitted to them, and if they have any questions, direct them to the proper individuals that may be able to help them a whole lot more than I am able to help them. But Mount Olive is important to me, very important to me. It's not about elections, it's not about election season, it's about the people in the community, and they deserve better. They deserve not to be under the moratorium, so that's why I'll help any way I can help. Secondly, we had the opportunity to have our orientation for our summer employment program. Our summer employment program, it helps tremendously our kids with their soft skills, we're giving them additional income, and even giving their parents a break, knowing they're somewhere safe for a couple of hours in the summer. So I want to commend our departments here that continue the program. I want to thank our, our board members here who supported the program, and I mean, it's just a good program. So the application deadline is April twenty-eighth, so even though we have a lot of kids returning, don't feel as though that you're not gonna get a job, you know? So April twenty-eighth is the deadline, don't wait till April twenty-eighth to apply. This program is so important because it doesn't just reach the city of Goldsboro, it reaches all the county. So if you live in Dudley, Eureka, Prince, Eureka, all over the county, if you live in Mount Olive, it's going to help your family or your children there in some capacity. So again, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, when you, you read over some of these proclamations, you know, a lot of them become personal, as Wayne has alluded to. The Donate, Donate Life is a personal thing because it affected a family member of mine and others. The Month of Military Child, as I said earlier, it's a, it affects, it's profound effect on, on, on the families of those that are deployed. We don't realize, you know, we talk about the ones that are deployed, but the family members that are left behind to take care of business every day with one less parent or one less spouse there to help them is a, is a big undertaking, and it takes the community to step in as, as we hear stories upon stories over the past, you know, years or so that, that our, our base has been, you know, on a continued deploy. We've heard some, just this past, just this past week of one from twenty-five years ago. Basically left, he was deployed, he was single. He said, don't know why he had a pet, but he had a pet, and being a single airman, left to Desert Storm, and left his keys and his financials with, with a friend to take care of business. And that's what it's all about, to, to look after our, our base and, and our neighbors, and they are just like family. That being said, we want to, we want to welcome our newest commander of the Fourth Fighter Wing, Colonel Losing. He was here, but his promotion ceremony was last couple of weeks ago, as Ms. Barbara alluded to earlier. We want to, we look forward to working with him and supporting him in his role and the long, hopefully, a longer term of existence of our Fourth Fighter Wing and our Tactical Squadrons. That being said, we're gonna recess our commissioner meeting to tour all of the construction projects that we have going on. There's gonna be several. So all that being said, we're gonna recess our meeting to later today.